Thank you Michelle. Well, welcome to the July 25th Board of Supervisors meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation under God, invincible for the liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So tonight, we'll start with a moment of silence for Wayne Bolt and then we'll read his proclamation. So just give me a second to share screen. All right, please join us in a moment of silence. All right. So the township prepared a proclamation for Wayne Bolt. He was a fixture of the community. Certainly a member of the Planning Commission for many years, Mark, if you wanted to say a few words. And just as the Planning Commission memorialized him in the minutes of their meeting, we're going to do so in our meeting, just as the Monroe County Commissioners also did in their meeting. So Mike or Mark, I don't know if you had a few words that you wanted to say.
All right, I think you can read the proclamation.
Okay. So whereas, and I'm reading this and sharing screens so that this way it will also be on the YouTube as well as attached to the minutes. Whereas Wayne Bolt served as Middle Smithfield Township Supervisor from 2002 to 2004, has consistently demonstrated outstanding leadership and initiative in various community projects and enterprises, thereby enriching lives of residents and fostering a spirit of unity and collaboration. Whereas Wayne Bolt was recognized as Middle Smithfield Township's 2022 Person of the Year for selfless service as a role model and has exemplified unwavering dedication and commitment to the betterment of Middle Smithfield Township through his tireless efforts and invaluable contributions. Whereas Wayne Bolt served as a member of the Middle Smithfield Township Planning Commission from 2012 to 2024 and a member of the Middle Smithfield Township Gulf Advisory Board from 2012 to 2013, was an advocate for the welfare of our community, which earned him the respect and admiration of all who have had the privilege of working alongside him. Whereas Wayne Bolt is honored in the Middle Smithfield Township Hometown Heroes Program for his service as a senior airman in the U.S. Air Force Vietnam Conflict. Whereas Wayne Bolt served as the general manager at the Hillside Inn Resort, which holds significant historical importance dating back to the early 20th century through mid-century, when no other resort in the Pocono Mountains allowed black guests, few employed blacks, and much less were black owned, making it a cherished landmark. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Middle Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors, Annette Atkinson, Mark Ome, and Mike Dwyer of Middle Smithfield Township East Stroudsburg, that July 19th, 2024 be designated as Wayne Bolt a Celebration of Life Day. On that day, we honored and celebrated Wayne Bolt for his exceptional service, unwavering dedication, and significant contributions to Middle Smithfield Township. The board extends our heartfelt gratitude to Wayne Bolt and our sincere appreciation for his profound impact on our community. Signed and sealed, July 19th, 2023. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion for the approval of the agenda and any amendments?
Motion.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Is there a motion for the approval of the minutes of July 11?
Motion.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Will, is there a report of executive session?
No, there's not. Thank you, manager.
Okay. Will Audinger is also from Grimbeane and Thatcher and he is here tonight because our solicitor Pat Armstrong is on vacation, taking a few vacation days. So that brings us to public comment on non-agenda items, which we can open with Delaware Water Gap. And so let me get. So Tara, thank you very much for coming again. And if you give me a moment, I will share a screen and find your presentation. All the many, all the many windows. Oh, here it is. Okay. There we go. Thank you. Well, thank you for joining us again. We're here July 11th and now we're here to hear more.
Yes. My name is Tara Maznati. I always let people know that I live in Knowlton, interesting, but I have I am a family member of the IAV DWG Coalition. As such, starting back, going back to 2019, we began letting everybody know that there were projects coming in Delaware Water Gap that belong to be impacting local Jersey and Pennsylvania. Part of that was the fact that the NJDOT's projects would certainly affect what happens on 611 side, partially because that is a roadway with no passers. We knew there's rocks that do come down on that road and we knew that there's structural issues. So what would happen when adding traffic from Silver to Pennsylvania? So we know it was a time bomb. Hence, the time bomb has gone off. We, this is a presentation I will be giving Monday to Cobb. I'm calling it How Local Government Can Help During 2025 Preliminary Engineering for the IAV 611 Projects. Because the fact of the matter is, as I mentioned to you guys the last time I was here, we do now have, as it says on the bottom left, three funded 611 projects that will be going into preliminary engineering in 2025. And we have the existing two IAV projects that have been ongoing really for a very long time. And they're both in preliminary engineering. So the, with the fact that these 611 ones were just funded, just changed the landscape of what we have right now. And we're taking what we learned from this IAV NJDOT experience. We're taking what we learned there and our hope is that we're going to start with the 611 projects in a much better place because of it. So go ahead.
Next slide?
Yeah.
Okay.
So as I said last time, this is the same slide that we have these five simultaneous projects and there is no ability to coordinate. So we have NJDOT with theirs, PennDOT with theirs, Federal Highway New Jersey is the lead, technically what's called the Lead Agency on the Jersey side. Because we're not in preliminary engineering yet, I can't say technically Federal Highway Pennsylvania is the Lead Agency, but when we get to the need for environmental assessment or environmental impact statement, odds are it's always the federal government that would have the lead on that. So interestingly enough, Federal Highway New Jersey and Federal Highway Pennsylvania are not even in the same regional office. So there's not even a easy way there for things to get coordinated. So in addition to no mechanism in place that we've seen so far for project layers to be coordinated, environmental reviews, traffic impacts, whatnot, certainly there is also no long-term solution. So also what started in 2019, I started right away saying, because this is my husband's industry, the last thing we want is all of this to happen with all these little independent projects without a full cumulative impact assessment. Lots of little projects accumulated, have a disaster in the end when in 10, 15 years, we're going to wind up on a different bridge. They're going to expand. You're not going to have the Monroe County Expansion Project with three lanes coming down by the time they're done. And on the Jersey side, three or four lanes coming into Columbia with from Portland, Columbia to Delaware, or I should say to really to Middle Smithfield being two lanes. It's just a matter of time before they get around to a major big project. Because my husband designs and builds these kind of major projects, it wasn't overwhelming for me to say, you know what, I'm going to start chattering about this so that maybe the community can grasp that kind of bigness. We deserve it. Our Delaware Water Gap deserves it, in my opinion. And there's only one way to get it right and that is to make sure that with any of these planned projects, that the right reviews happen simultaneously. Let me see where's the next page. So here we go.
Next page.
Here are the alternatives. Oh, go to the next one. Mine's different. There we go. So some of the alternatives, as I said, are tunnels, bridges, bypasses. There's actually, I think, 14 different alternatives. No, so what I did because last night Middle Smithfield, no, you're Middle Smithfield, asked for the alternatives to be able to see them. Like I just threw the alternatives onto a slide, just be able to say there are alternatives out there, but I didn't do it in a way that you could really read the little fine print. They asked for these things so they can read them in fine print. So on, on, so I guess these will be attached to the minutes because it's here. You'll be able to zoom in and see the actual alternatives. So it is possible. We deserve it. They do it out west all the time. This would be our gateway, like New York City is getting what it wanted for its new tunnels, but it has to start somewhere. So go back one in here, please. So we learned what we, what we've learned and what I'm making, what I have validated in that what we've learned. It's been validated through this experience of 611 being closed for two and a half years. The fact of the matter is, if you're going to touch any of the resources in the Delaware Water Gap, you're going to bump into these federal laws. And that is the National Environmental Policy Act, the National Historic Preservation Act, Endangered Species Act, Wild and Sealed Rivers Act, Native American Graves Protection and Repairation, Repair, Repair, I can't say the word, Act, and the Archaeological Resource Protection Act. They're in place. They're there. The National Park Service, when it reviews a project, a federal action is federally funded project, so we now have funding. The National Park Service has to go through reviews that are required for these kind of projects and make sure the processes these laws require are followed. And that takes time and that takes review. On the Jersey side, quite frankly, we didn't mind that the New Jersey Department of Transportation was fumbling that football. Because we, the projects as proposed on the Jersey side needed a higher level review. So the more time we had, the more time we had to get into the behind-the-scenes stuff on those projects. We can't have that for 611 though. We don't want to let. We need these next projects to happen fast and to happen quickly. And what we're doing, as I said, is applying what we learned to it. So the solution to going faster, up right side, is to not have the National Park Service, to not have the Federal Highway, to not have NJDOT or PennDOT as the lead agency for these projects. There is a mechanism that, there is a way that, to trigger the use of a consultation from out west to be a lead agency for these, these kind of projects. So I sorted it all out, got it figured out. So part of this presentation is also because, I don't know if it passed a legal review, but the resolution for your consideration, whether that's for tonight or next meeting or whatever, this is explaining what that resolution is about. So the resolution is asking for actions that would solicit the agency responsible for these things to have a different lead agency to review these projects so that the mistakes Federal Highway, I believe, having done somewhat of an autopsy on what happened with 611, I do believe that it was the Federal Highway's responsibility as our federal government to work with the Native American Federal Tribal Lenape Nations. They are sovereign nations, to bring them in earlier than they did for what happened with 611. And maybe had they done that two and a half, maybe two years ago, they could be putting up the temporary things they're going to put up now so that they're going to open 611 temporarily while they work on the permanent solution. Maybe they would have realized earlier that they weren't going to be able, first and foremost, to do the radical slope thing they wanted to do. PennDOT came in and said, this is how we mitigate. It was never going to happen. They would have right away shut that down. So then we had to go through the review, reapplication for the special use permit. Second round was like, you know, it's not really working. I don't know what would have been, but if Federal Highways, I believe, brought them in earlier, things might have changed. The federally recognized tribes have requested Federal Highway, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania to determine if our Delaware Water Gap is what's called a traditional cultural landscape. That's a different, it's a whole different designation. That's a big, special something, like having Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area, like having a wild and scenic river. This is another whole designation. So even though NJDOT started their projects that the tribes got involved in very late in the process, only in 2020 did, or maybe 21, did they start talking about traditional cultural landscapes. But still that determination hasn't been made. So another thing we're going to be doing in this resolution is you are asked, we are asking, and Congressman Cartwright and Congresswoman Kane on our side, they know all of what I'm talking about. We've been talking behind the scenes about all this kind of stuff. They know that the municipalities are going to be asking for them to support the action of asking Federal Highway because it's their federal action that's going to do the potential damage in the Delaware Water Gap. So since their action is what's happening here, we believe they should be the ones to initiate the, the review or whatever is necessary to determine if our Delaware Water Gap would be a national natural landscape, another whole special designation, and a natural historic landscape. From all the, everything you look at, it seems pretty reasonable to make such a request. And I would think there's ample record to say historically and naturally geologically, we have, we need special needs and it's why we love it as too. We just take it for granted. It's like, the analogy I use is the sky is blue. We take it for granted that the sky is blue. We didn't have to worry about the skies blue. But you know what? Until you need to really get into the fact that the sky is blue, it's still blue. Well, our Delaware Water Gap is or is not eligible to be listed in the National Register as such. So that's the second action. That will trigger, all this triggers the efficient coordination. So the National Environmental Policy Act, that's the one that has to do with EISs and environmental assessments. Okay, that's the big law that says you must do these studies when you have these kind of projects and you must determine the impacts to things like we think about, birds, weeds, water trees. Those are the things we know. You know, you got to check on these things, the endangered species. But it's really about the humans. It's about the human relationships and these natural resources. It also involves us. It involves impacts to traffic, impacts to our lifestyle, impacts to our recreational use. So that's one whole set of laws that require a process. The other one is the National Historic Policy Act, Preservation Act, excuse me. What I just said about the possible traditional cultural landscape and the national natural landmark and the national historic landmark falls under that category. Just like on the Pennsylvania side, there's, the rail line is eligible to be listed in the National Register of Historic Places. That's where Amtrak is proposed to run. So that's a historic property that already is existed and identified and would be under this, what's called Section 106 Historic Properties Review. If we weren't now starting to ask for determination for these other big ones, we could get two years from now. And somebody could be saying, wait a minute, we didn't determine if this was a historic resource yet. So we're going to start upfront asking for that determination now so that these processes, and that's the next phase as in the resolution, these processes can happen together integrally, but it can only happen if you start early in the process. And that's a part of the learning, the learning that we've done along the way. So that is where we're heading. The next slide is really just for reference. It talks, it tells you about a pitch, I think it's two, two, one, two. It's in that one. That one is really just so you know what the laws pretty much say. The PDF gives you a link to those and gets into it more detail. And then go back one, go ahead and go back one. And then this speaks to, to therefore be a resolve. Let me just make sure I get each one. So Knowlton, oh, first and foremost, of course, we continue to support and encourage every possible action to safely open and maintain all lanes of 611 and IAV in the corridor, including on building work. There's nothing we want to do that slows anything down. Knowlton and Amtrak Townships did recently pass resolutions asking for these reviews. So the resolution is supporting Knowlton's actions. It is saying, right from the get-go, we expect a full environmental impact statement. We don't want to start with the lower level review, which is an environmental assessment. We start with the environmental assessment. At the end of the two years, they come back and say they're finding a significant impact or not. They say, oh, yeah, it looks like it will be a significant impact. And then they move on to the EIS. We want that EIS to start immediately because of the complexity of the potential significant impacts that we want that to determine the national historic landmark and the land. That's a landmark, yes. Oh, and it also makes sure that we are constantly telling them the right email addresses to use for your municipalities because they all seem to find a way to not, not give us the right information. And we're acknowledging and appreciating that Congresswoman Bodhheimer had the lead on the Jersey side until we got redistricted, then it became Congresswoman Kane, he's involved. Congresswoman Wild had our district coming up here. It wasn't Congresswoman Cartwright until just a year, a year or two ago. She's followed along and been involved. And Congresswoman Cartwright is very engaged right now. So it's just making sure they and your senators, you need to know that Senator Fetterman and Senator Casey's offices have been involved in these meetings. There's a representative in these meetings that have been going on. I think it's always important to make sure you guys are aware of that. So also in the packet, I just had the draft resolution. So it's just, you had it and it's in there and has links to these references. So that's the only reason I put it in there as a video. So that's just, that's the end of my chit chat. Now it's for you guys to ask me questions.
So the consortium, that would be basically the, so is that the townships? Or is that an independent group?
And so the Council on Environmental Quality
Right.
is a presidential agency responsible for the environmental EPA, really.
Right.
And the EIS and the EPA comes down through that. So there's, and that's what this is saying. We've already started discussions actually through Congresswoman Cartwright and Kane's offices to find the right people to talk about that. For mega controversial projects, major complicated projects, projects of significant public interest, they are the ones that use a consulting group from out west. I forget the name. I actually called them, I think it was 2000, early 2002 because I had a bad feeling that we were heading in this kind of direction and I wanted to make sure it was still. So it's, no, none of those costs, well, it's our tax dollar, federal tax dollars, but they hire out.
So, so everything would filter to that consultant if you looked at a pyramid? And then the decision-making processes would be streamlined to that consultant, correct?
They are, so my understanding is they are then responsible to implement all the requirements of the environmental impact statement.
Right.
I don't know, and I really am at a loss as how that all coordinates with the other projects. This is a very unique situation.
Agreed.
So I don't know that there's that much precedent
Right.
for the comp, the jurisdictional complexities that we have. So I don't know that, but somebody's going to start an environmental impact statement first. I think it's going to be your retaining wall project and your 611 rockfall project. I think that's going to be the first EIS. So if you start here saying, we need to consider the others, other projects that are far along in development. They would bring all the stakeholders together. So in environmental impact statement, there's a scoping thing that has to go on and everybody has a seat at the table and there's a timeline and there's a website specific for it, all kinds of things that haven't existed yet. You, as a municipality, would have a seat at that table as municipality.
I'm just thinking to streamline and to actually get it moving, that you wouldn't have 20 stakeholders, you know, submitting questions and, you know, blah, like this, huh, like that, well, you know, put it all together.
It's required. So it, it is required that the stakeholders have the opportunity to come that there's time, there's timeframes
Right.
attached to every one of these. This is definitely like on the Jersey side, if you only knew what we've got through.
Right.
We submitted questions to a meeting that I, I think that the chairwoman attended that in March. That during March, we have not, our response yet to questions. That can't happen
Agreed.
in this process.
Agreed.
And that's where we want to start, where it can't, it has to be efficient.
Right. Okay.
Yes. Sure, thank you.
Any other questions for Tara?
I'll go, I'm ready.
Danny, any younger?
It seems to me that one of the major obstacles that you're going to be wanting to is with regard to the native participation in the project. And I say that because I've had the pleasure, of course, of being driven down to Arleth, Oklahoma, and Arleth, Oklahoma, to engage in discussions with the different branches of the Delaware tribe. And there's also the Muncie Plan sheet looking at this conference as well. These are folks that are being asked to consult on a project and there's no particular urgency. Folks in Oklahoma, with respect to a project that's in Pennsylvania. And number two, they are not being paid for the consulting services. All right. Beyond that, you factor in the element of a single archaeologist functioning as the Cultural Resources Manager for the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area with at best only a temporary staff of interns that normally work primarily with the Jurisdiction Office instead. And you see that you're going to be running into a problem of advocacy. I'm not sure I know what the solution is. Probably going to be another ideal solution, probably using the, the researcher and the user that Helen, to see if there's a way to extract that. But I think that effort's going to have to be made because in the long run, you don't need that last-minute cultural landscape becoming a quagmire that all of you have wondered.
Thank you. So I've been working with them since 2019, directly. But they're, what they're called, they're tribal historic conservation officers. For a chance meeting, I solicited information. I was, I wanted to know their sentiment to this, these projects on the Jersey side because if these projects were acceptable to them, just like I reached out to the leadership in the National Park Service, if these projects were acceptable to the National Park Service, then I certainly wasn't going to definitely encourage my municipality and other Then I certainly wasn't gonna definitely try, encourage my municipality and other communities. To make noise. I wasn't gonna be a noisemaker and drive a community effort to stop something. If it was acceptable to the tribes.
Um, coming up at the bottom of their, uh, ten day paper table. That they're conference being held at Ursinus College. And uh, till the Navi Symposium, and that would probably represent the perfect opportunity. Uh. I don't know whether Susan Markor uh, or Kevin Lucas will be there. But there's a reasonable chance that one of the two will be present at that event.
Yeah, so I, I've met individually with them and together. Um, so, so that, that adds to my comfort. In this approach. Um, that our only chance. To be efficient. Is to go in. With the horrible experience we've had. And make the best use of it. So, thank you for that. I like your, um.
Oh.
That I realized, I know that. So yes. So thank you for that comment. I'm, I'm glad to have the opportunity to, and I have their permission to share that I have that relationship. So when I say that they requested. It's um, the people that were just spoken to. They requested that the um. That this be looked at as a traditional cultural landscape. And they, I have permission from them to share this with you. Very respectful, I try to be. That's why I'm going to this. Seminar, you know, it's um, you wanna understand. Their language, where they've come from, in order to comfortably stand up here and speak to us. But I wanna say, you know, this is not saying we, there's people that don't want this kinda government. Over, oversight on things. They don't like these kinda laws. We don't have a place for that right now. These are the laws that exist. These are the processes that are in place, and I can't be a part of that opinion about it. I just wanna be a part of. Doing what we can and what we have to work with. To get, help hopefully have the least impactful project. As quick as possible, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity to share.
Uh, you have a question from Charlie.
I'm Charlie Scker. Um, uh, my, one of the things I do, I'm the. PoconoDayTripper.com's historical tour guide, wearing Charlie Rock.
Hello.
Through the gap and through everywhere. I'm excited here that six eleven will finally be reopened, even if it's a very short period of time to allow us to come through. I was involved in getting the reopening of the Love Side app, and at that time, I was Steve Earl's campaign manager. But I heard you say, I think I heard you say, I don't know, so I understand. When this temporary reopening can it go into the permanent project? Will there be a shutdown again for a period of time, or are they looking to try and keep it open while they work the project, or don't we know at this point?
We don't know at this point, but it's. You know the, the road well, and you can't imagine them rehabilitating that retaining wall.
I am, yeah.
Without, and nor do they, can they do these studies. You know, they, when they have to go out and do the surveys. That usually are a major highway, that's a lane closure. Well. We got it all. That's, it's complicated. They can't really do that with the lanes.
I'm assuming, I don't too sure, but I'm, I'm sure things like the whole arcade are being taken into consideration. And slicing that along there to preserve them.
This is uh, the focus of these projects is the Monroe County border. Monroe County is the point of gap.
Right.
Yeah, it's.
And the whole arcade is on.
That's, no, that's not, that's Monroe County, yeah.
Oh?
Yeah, it's a little point of gap.
Okay.
Yeah. Off my mouth.
So, so that, that part's on, like, if you know, shut down right now.
Too far.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other quick questions for Tara? She's been so generous with her time already.
Thank you for that.
Alright, we'll stick around.
Did the resolution make the cut?
It's uh, later on in the agenda. I'll stick around for questions and comments or new business.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment on anything that is not on the agenda? Anybody? Okay, uh, announcements, just real quick. Memory Makers has been postponed. It was August tenth, and now it will be September twenty eighth. Um, the Friends of the Delaware Water Gap is still having their event this Saturday, July twenty seven. At the uh, Community Center. And Matty's Snow Day is this Sunday at Eagle's Rest. So um, you might remember Matty's uh. Angels as one of the recipients of the rest of the year, so. That's all I have for that. And Michelle, I believe you have some correspondence?
We do, we have a few correspondence. Uh, the township received a thank you letter from, excuse me, the owner of Pocono Package Ship. They just recently opened their Down Mary Forest Chopper Plaza. Uh, personally, I've used them quite a few times, and they are wonderful. Uh, the thank you to the township for the ribbon cutting and grateful for the warm reception and opportunity. To become a part of such a vibrant and welcoming community. The township, this is the second year that we are involved in the live work program. If you were here two weeks ago, there was a preview where the vocational. That program for students with special needs. Are involved in work of program. It's no cost to the township, is paid through the state. And today was their last day of working at the township. And we presented, uh, Mishad Palmer and Emir Solomon. And Michael, the pack, I can't pronounce it last.
Michael.
Michael, that's how I go by Michael. And Johnny Willemus.
Dope.
Wolkachek. They were the best summer help uh, that we could ask for. And it meant a lot to the employees that did get to work with them, to be around them. So we just wanted them to shout out again.
Yeah, and Danny is one of the stewards of the community garden, so you. Might recognize Michael Dolkachek as the son of Jessica, who has the, the box up there, so he's been up there often, so. Scott, so we. Well, thank you, Michelle, and thank you for administering the program and a shout out to Public Works. Was it Buddy and?
Yeah, they were Buddy's buddies.
Yes, yeah, who, who uh, oversaw them.
Some of them became good friends.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that brings us to the public hearing. Um, we were scheduled to have a public hearing on Proposed Ordinance Number Two Forty Three. Which would be uh, the cable franchise agreement between the township and Blue Ridge Cable. And there was going to be uh, an adjustment for it, for, to adjust it for no fee and to continue the cable franchise. Agreement, but um. Upon further conversation. The solicitor was able to get K, uh, Blue Ridge Cable to issue refunds for July for the cable franchise fee. And to push back the date. Alright, so I don't know if you wanted to say a few words.
Uh, that's correct, ma'am, Chair. The only thing for tonight's purposes then, since we got a change in the agreement. Uh, it's my recommendation that we just authorize for, reauthorize for advertisement, the cable franchise ordinance, since there's been a modification. To the ordinance as it was advertised. Uh, path prepared in advertisement for, I believe it's your August eighth meeting. At the date, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I would just seek a motion to authorize advertising of the ordinance for August eight.
Sure, and to set the date for the public hearing also at August eight, so, uh, so moved.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Uh.
And again, kudos to our solicitor for um, getting Blue Ridge Cable to move faster, cuz the fee was going to be. On the bill every month until uh, this was done. So um, once he backdated it, they'll be able to issue. You might not see your refund until September or October, but at least you'll get it. So thank you. Um, and that brings us to the treasures report.
Okay, motion from our general count, seventy nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
Motion for our show count, sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-six cents.
I'll second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Uh, motion for our about, twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-one cents.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Uh.
Aye. Thank you. Um, Solicitors Report.
Uh, no, of course, not your question.
Okay, um, I have two questions from our Suiter Department, so maybe I have to this if we could.
Absolutely.
Ha, hang around for a minute. Um, and Ben, uh. Thank you for joining us on Zoom, but we're up to the Engineers' Report.
I have, I have no report beyond what we'll be discussing under new business.
Okay, terrific. Uh, we are being no old business. That brings us to new business. So that is Resolution Zero Seven Dash Twenty Twenty Four Dash Two. In support of the Route AB Six Eleven Delaware Water Gap Action.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Right.
Aye, so there you have it, Tara. Um, next is Resolution Zero Seven Dash Twenty Twenty Four Dash Three. And this is to support the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semi-Quintennial. Which is America Two Fifty PA. So the commissioners have started that group together and they're. Asking for uh, members of each municipality to get together so that we have a coordinated celebration. So um, I would make that motion to pass this resolution.
Sure.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Now, just taking a look at that particular project, there was uh. One aspect that I call mine, I, uh, the notion of a liberty free plan.
Mm-hmm.
And that's something that could be pursued by all the municipal, even if it's a living, even if it's brought in, bring it on board with, uh, the attitude technically on it.
I think that's a great idea. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Uh.
Aye. Alright, uh, and the next one is Resolution Zero Seven Dash Twenty Twenty Four Dash Four. Which is uh. Pennsylvania Department of Transports to provide seventy-five percent reimbursement. Like, I think this one is yours.
Yeah, 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 I mean, I'll make a mark.
Oh, do you wanna say a few words?
I mean, this is just, um. Pendot is embarking on aligning Howell Road with Two O Nine. Um, and we have the sewer main that's on Two O Nine. So. Um, they won't pay for the whole. Uh, relocation, but they'll pay for seventy-five percent of it. Um. So I guess that's the best we're gonna get out of them, cuz that's their standard practice, so. That's what this is all about.
So, uh, Michael's.
So I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution. Seven Dash Twenty Twenty Four Dash Four.
No, second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Uh.
Aye. Um, and I will make a motion to accept, accept the letter of resignation from Bob Early, who sat on our Revitalized Two O Nine Committee. Um, he writes here, "Thank you for the opportunity to chair the Revitalized Two O Nine Committee from its inception. And I thank the committee for their hard work and support. The Matching Funds Program is a wonderful investment in our business community that will have lasting effect on the visual improvement of Route Two O Nine. As I have said so many times, I am proud of our township leadership and dedicated employees that plan events. Support the community, maintain an entire sewer system, and of course, do a magnificent job maintaining roads and public areas. With all that said, I am resigning from the Revitalized Two O Nine Committee because of other obligations." He's got another, there's only so many committees that you can sit on, and there's another one that, uh, that needs his help at the time. Um, so he attended the July twenty-third meeting, and that is his last, and this is his letter of resignation. So we regretfully, um, make a motion to accept this letter.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Uh.
So that does mean that there's a seat open, and you'll see us, uh, putting that out there. Um, for anyone who might like to apply for this seat to sit on this revitalized Two O Nine Committee. And that brings us to Resolution Zero Seven Dash Twenty Twenty Four Dash Five. This is an application for a DCED multi-modal grant for sidewalks along a section of Two O Nine. Um, so can I have a second for, uh, I'll make a motion for that, and can I have a second for discussion? Okay, so let me just share screen. Second. One minute. Okay. There we go. Okay, so every year. About, um, there are multi-modal grants that come up. There's always one from the DCED, and there's always one from. Uh, Pendot. So this one happens to be for the DCED multi-modal that, uh. Grant submission is due July thirty-first. And uh. Ben is still on, and he could answer any questions on this as well, but you could see what is planned here. As you might remember in the past, the township has always applied for these multi-modal grants for sidewalks all the way down to Two O Nine. Initially, we started with the whole uh, six-mile corridor. And um, we were not successful in getting that grant. And, and even in the beginning, we had thought, you know, there was a one percent loan and that could finish the project. Um, off, should we be successful in getting this. The DCED grant does not require a match. Um, and the board has paperwork in your packets of the cost estimate that Ben prepared, which he can. Uh, take us through. Um, but you generally have a better chance of getting the grant if there is some skin. If you have some skin in the game, too. I believe they have us slotted for a ten percent match. Uh, so the sidewalk that is being proposed is in front of the daycare center. Uh, on Two O Nine, that's a little bit aways from Sellersville Drive. So that would connect with the Lala sidewalk. Uh, McDonald's, um, it looks like we would have to do that. There was some discussion today about um, Tractor Supply not doing the sidewalk in front of McDonald's. So that is included in this grant, so you would have one continuous connection there. And then across the street, what you would have is the Old Dutchman, which is now the cigarette outlet. Um, we just awarded them, uh, the board just awarded them a revitalized Two O Nine grant for landscaping along Two O Nine. In front of the whole, what used to be the Old Dutchman uh, area there, and then this grant. Um, should we apply for it, uh, would put a sidewalk on the other end of that further. Um, beautifying the front of that, um, of that storefront. And then that would tie into the gas station, which would also have that sidewalk there. So that's the diagram that you're looking at now. Um, and the cost estimate that Ben, uh, that Gilmore had come up with, the projected cost. Of seven hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. That would include, um, the sidewalk, uh.
Seven sixty-three, it's at seven seventy.
Six ninety-five, one forty-five.
No, no.
That's the revised one. Oh, I'm sorry, six nine five.
No. That's the match. That's the twelve.
Right, okay, seven seventy, one four five.
Right.
Um, and that would include, uh. Streetscapings such as trees, streetscape items like benches, trees, and all of that kinda stuff on it. So that should. Prepare the board for discussion on it.
Well. One of my questions. Right up the top here is. The part from Sellersville to Tractor Supply, that's already in. The bond for Tractor Supply to do that work. Why are we, why are we doing it?
Well, we, that's a very good question. We had called the engineer that did this, uh, part. Um, because Tractor Supply is now asking for their, um, escrow back.
Right.
For it, and they felt that the way the condition was written would not hold up very well. Um, so they, they do not believe that Tractor Supply will do that.
Who doesn't believe?
Chris McDermott. I gave him a call yesterday to discuss this, cuz there were questions about. I gave him a call yesterday to discuss this because there were questions about, like, the last email I had on this topic was from April twenty twenty two. When they were updating their highway occupancy permit application for the. Um. I think it was the ADA ramps as they tied into the existing McValens driveway. And uh, I think uh. I think the last I saw was, you know, township recommending, well, you know, if they're updating that. Application along McDonald's um. Frontage, they may as well extend. The sidewalk uh down to the intersection, and I guess this had been discussed at meetings. Um. Uh, I'm just going off of what Chris said that uh. He thought that the. That there wasn't much teeth to the conditional approval.
It was in their conditional rule. That's why, why would we release a bond? If the work isn't done? We released the, the bond and, and say. You don't wanna do it, okay?
I, so, I guess I, what I said to Annette earlier is, I, I would recommend. I don't have that document, so I, I'm not able to look into what the language was or, or how it was um. Uh, laid out, but. Our, our thought was um. Again, going off of Chris's input. Assume that the township would be including this within the grant. And then if some of the township can take a closer look at that agreement and. Yeah, if they're, if they're requesting uh the remaining balance of their security to be released. Now's the time to get that addressed, so.
But they had requested their security released before, and they were told no because. A, the sidewalks that they installed are at the wrong elevation and B, they didn't do the sidewalk.
Okay, I, I'm not involved on that, so.
Am I right? I mean. Correct. I mean.
I, I think that makes sense, Mike. I, I, I'm just going off of the information we had available to us at this time, and I, I would also think too that. Um. You know, because the grant, the grant application is due next Wednesday, so if we could have it answered to get that result before then. Um. That's great, but I would think too, maybe going in. Asking for a little bit more as opposed to adding it back in later if something falls through a tractor supply. Might be the better way to err.
But we have their bond, so I, I'm, what would fall through? We would just take their bond and do it.
Sure.
Why would we, and I'm saying, why would we put that into a? A grant application?
Again, when talking with Chris, I didn't know the status on, you know, how much security was left or that that was actually bonded.
So that could be one of the things we do tonight is if we uh uh make a motion to approve this resolution contingent upon. That dollar amount being corrected.
Well, and then the other question I had, I don't know, Ben, if you've done. Any of the engineering, but. Why wouldn't we at least? Try to connect all one side? I mean, this is basic, huh?
It's my question.
I mean, they're basically in the middle of nowhere. I mean, if, you know, what you're doing in front of. Um, what's it called there? Kessler's place. I mean. That distance, why wouldn't you go on the other side? Of U Lock and, and connect down to.
Perkins.
Perkins.
Well, that's a good question. Uh, what we did was, we forwarded all our failed applications to Gilmore. And said, here's what didn't work.
Mm-hmm.
Can you suggest something that you feel would work?
Right, and my question is.
This is, this is what Gilmore came up with.
That's what I'd say, we didn't have a chance to review this, that's what I'm saying. You know, rather than having disjointed sidewalks. All up and down to online on either side. Why don't we just say, okay, you know, let's focus on the, the south side of the street. Connect as much as we can together. Alright, and then next year or whenever, we'll go for the north. I mean, this right now, you're connecting nothing to nothing.
Well, wait a minute.
On, on the Kessler side.
There's not gonna be crosswalks. No, no way there's gonna be a crosswalk here from one side to the other.
Right, so basically you're connecting Taco Bell. To Muller's. And there's nothing there. And then, then you hit the cemetery and, and what happened?
Yeah, you wouldn't, you wouldn't go through the cemetery anyway, you could continue that, so that would just be one little stub.
Right, so that's my question. Why don't you just stay on the other side of the street? Try to get a connection, you have the wrong full sidewalks. You know?
So, so what do you wanna do? So for instance, take the property immediately to the east of Tractor Supply there, right, where they have? Um. I, I guess, a pretty long, open frontage there, right? Are you planning to? Curb that and put in a driveway for them and have that sidewalk there, or?
Well, I mean, that's gonna be a battle because that's his, that's his entrance and he. He doesn't have an H L P that pre, predates H O Ps there. The same with Muller's.
Yeah.
The reason why they stopped at Muller's is because of what's going on with the home healthcare and that H O P, and that's why it stopped there.
Right, but, but what I'm saying is nothing from there. All the way up to, to municipal.
Mm-hmm.
There's nothing there.
Right, I, and I, I mean, I, I can certainly bring this up with Kristen and the traffic group putting this together, but I, I think it's. It, it's the way that the, the grant reads in that it, it really is intended to. Um, really accomplish two things, is one is to fill in gaps of broken sidewalk areas for industry connectivity and then two. Um, to be in areas that. Where there are. Residential properties in the area, so that's where the uh, and I'm blanking on the name of the um. Subdivision, that's right up Big Ridge Drive, right, but that was part of the argument was that, you know, you have a residential subdivision. Uh, too far in there. There's just not a lot of other. Sections of the township where um, you know, the sidewalk connectivity could really be.
Right, but if you stay on. If you stay on this, the north side of two oh nine. Where you have McDonald's, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Wawa has sidewalks. You're talking about sidewalks in front of Rickabono. The U Lockets are putting sidewalks in when they developed that. So now you're talking about putting the sidewalk in front of that. Crappy house. To. Uh. The Dollar Store, what you call. Dollar General.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and then you go on, I mean. You know, and you can connect all the way down to. Tractor Supply.
Hey, you can go, you can come from Perkins all the way down.
Correct.
And any kind of improvement we put at the, at the restaurant there. Or uh, you know, where it has the clothes bins. Any kind of curbing or anything we do there is an improvement on that.
Right, but that's, but now we have sidewalks, being near the whole stretch of two oh nine on one side. Rather than, you know, disjoint it, just throwing sidewalks wherever we feel, you know, we can fit.
Well, the idea would be the next grant would take it further, because it won't. Ben, explain the goal of the Penn, the goal of the Pendot grant is different than D C E D.
Yeah, I think the, the Pendot one can be applied more broadly. The D C E D one is where. Um, you know, the expectation is that you're basically. Filling in the gaps and, and.
Right, and that's what I'm talking about.
You know, I'm just, but I'm looking at this and, and, you know, Tractor Supply to Dollar General, you got. You know, I, I, I forget the owner of the other property, but Sue's Thai Cuisine and Noodle Bar, you have a couple single family residential.
Right.
Um, ones.
Right.
It's just, it's just with the. With the open pavement connect, you know, which is something that as these properties get improved, Pendot's trying to eliminate. But who knows how long it's gonna take for that to happen? Um, you know, for these properties to.
But it, but it defines sidewalk. Doesn't. Proclude you from. Going down a road, putting curbs in and, and if you do an entrance. It's just a defined side. Right?
Alright, so if I go back to Kristen on this, so real quick, Mike, so in your, in your mind. You want it, you would think it makes sense to limit it just to the north side. Starting at the daycare. And then, well, the McDonald's would basically be coming out. That's actually bonded.
Correct.
Or at least we can make note of that in the application. And then, where do you want it ending?
Where I would connect each sidewalk.
No, wait a minute, wait, I have it up here. So then on Sue's Thai, which is basically one large parking lot.
We would just have a defined sidewalk.
Okay.
And then we go, then, then you have Teddy's, right?
And there's a couple of residents.
Right.
And then Dollar General has a sidewalk.
They have a sidewalk.
And then we just need to get to Perkins.
Correct.
And when you say, when you say a defined sidewalk. Are, are you meaning, like, actually curbing? Off part of the front edge and just having a driveway access? No, you're just having, saying, just having a concrete sidewalk that passes through their frontage.
That's correct.
With no curb.
Right.
Would it have streetscaping? I imagine you wouldn't allow it.
Well, you have to get a hold of those owners because they're giving up. Free access to their property. Basically, you're, you're telling them.
That's right, and I think that's why Gilmore came up with the plan that they did, because now we have willing property owners. And you get a chance to do streetscaping.
Well, we can do streetscaping, I mean, we're, we're doing.
Well, you can't, you can't on Sue's Thai, you can't be able to do that, you won't be.
Understood, but what are you gonna do in front of, I mean, Kessler, I mean, you need a twenty foot wall, so you don't see that.
She, she, we, we've just approved her for the landscaping on the revitalized two oh nine. And a sidewalk on the other side of that would not only enhance the look of that property. But also make it more valuable for somebody who would wanna buy it. It's already done.
Well, I, I think.
And that, and that I think could be a good.
I think we could, we focus on connecting our sidewalks, that's what D C E D wants. You know, it makes more sense rather than having disjointed sidewalks on either side of the street. You know, and then hoping next year, the year after, five years from now. You know, we get a million.
No, there's two, there's two a year, so, but we do this one now and then apply for the Pendot one when that comes.
I, I think that the township should focus on the north side. Get everything connected. And then we go to the south side.
Well, let me ask it. Let me ask this question then, if that is the goal, then, then could Gilmore put something together for that? Then that changes, will, what this resolution is, could we schedule a special meeting to just adopt this resolution then? So that it could be submitted on Wednesday, then we would have to have a short special meeting on, say, Tuesday.
So you get, you have to have a twenty four hour. Lead time.
Yeah.
Legal notice.
What's this, what's in the, it's just the, the amount, just the dollar amount, we can't change that.
Is it, well, dollar amount would be fine, because they're not a reference.
The narrative explains exactly what you're doing.
Not in the resolution.
Is there a reference to the narrative in the resolution that is attached to Exhibit A?
No, it just says installation of sidewalk associated A by ranch and grains improves along Route two oh nine.
If it's, if it's that vague, then you're all right.
Right, it's just the amount.
So, in that case, you're fine, as long as the amount. Is going to be the same, that's the question, I think, is.
Well, that's up to Ben, he can do it magic, man.
I don't think he can do it.
I mean, six hundred and ninety dollars worth of sidewalk?
So how would we, how would we do this resolution and? Can, we could, we could pass it contingent on.
You could say the amount not to exceed. That could be, that's one way to do it.
Okay.
So it's seven hundred and seventy five thousand, right? That's what this is, basically.
Yeah, I, I would think, the odds are it's a reduction with what we're talking about.
So. Well, I, I wouldn't reduce it, I, I think you just add more sidewalk, Ben.
Okay.
No, Will is saying, Will is saying, we could just say an amount not to exceed, but then, so now. My next question is, what is the appetite for the board in matching this grant? So what we had proposed was a ten percent match. So if it was seven hundred and fifty thousand, it would be a seventy five thousand dollar match from the township. So.
So the township would max seventy seven five instead of seventy five.
Well, what I'm asking is, if he, if he's able to reduce it. Because you've changed the scope of the sidewalk, why not do the resolution saying not, an amount not to exceed seven seventy five? And encourage Gilmore. To, to sharpen pencils.
I think, that's what we just had.
What's your match, ten percent?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I think you said, Mike, it, why save money, just put in more sidewalk?
Correct, seven seventy five, correct.
And I'm saying, an amount not to exceed seven seventy five, let's not do sidewalk just for the sake of. Doing it.
No, I'd like to connect as much as we can.
I understand that.
Right.
I understand that.
Okay.
But. If there's a way to reduce the amount of sidewalk to something that makes sense and have streetscaping with it. I'm not a fan of.
How many linear feet do you have in this estimate? You have eight hundred and thirty feet. Right?
Yeah.
So presumably, four hundred feet. Is, is in front of Kessler and the gas station, right? Am I reading it right? Generally, Ben?
Yeah, that looks about approximately, right, yep.
Alright. So I'm taking four hundred feet from the south side and I'm putting it on the north. And I saved you McDonald's.
Well, we'll s- we'll see.
Well, then we'll take their bond and do it.
Yeah.
We're not gonna put it in the grant. We'll take the bond money and, and do it when we're doing this. That's what the bond is for.
I understand.
Right.
I understand, but we've already had an engineer say the wording wasn't that great. To enforce it.
When they, but when they were here for their conditional use. They agreed to do that sidewalk. And that was in lieu of recreational fee, I believe it was. That, that they weren't charged.
Yeah, it says, I just, I was reading the improvements, I'm sorry, the approval resolution, it says um. Recreation fee or sidewalk extension, which I assume is the same sidewalk extension we're talking about.
Correct.
At the discretion of the Board of Supervisors.
Correct.
How much was the re- did it list the recreational fee amount?
It didn't, it just said, right, I mean. Look, I just, I just did the research as we were talking, but all, it's all this recreation.
And how many times did they have to redo the sidewalk?
They haven't done it yet.
But, none, in front of Tractor Supply.
They haven't done, they haven't redone it. The, the debate is between the subcontractor and the owner. Subcontractor saying he followed the plan. And, and. If, if he did follow the plans, then, then the plans were wrong, and that's where the disconnect is. The owner's trying to get the subcontractor to come back to do it. But they're fighting, saying, well, that's what you had on your plans.
So I remember them removing it once already.
Removing what?
There's the sidewalk, they started to put it in already and removed it. And put it in again.
Where?
In front of Tractor Supply. They had a section.
While they.
While they.
While they, yeah, 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 agree, agree.
Right.
Right. But it's still not at the right elevation, you can see. Every winter now, it, it just ices up, it's a pond. It's too low. So again, we have their bond, if they don't wanna do it, in a real amount of time, that's fine, we'll take their bond and everybody goes away happy.
Alright, so Ben, when do you think you can have a new plan?
I mean, I'll talk to Kristen tomorrow um. And uh, follow up with you sometime tomorrow.
You want me to do it? I got white out and a yellow pen.
No, I just wanna check with her, uh, you know, she's just more familiar with the grant application itself. Um, and, and the criteria for it, so let me just run it by her. Um. We'll go from there.
Cool.
Okay, and then we need um, so the other thing we need by Wednesday is letters from all of these. Uh, people that are getting the sidewalk in front, saying that they agree. So we would be starting from scratch because we've already gotten agreement from what Gilmore already proposed. So McDonald's shouldn't be a problem. Right?
I think Kristen was even saying too, that one, that one might be within the right of way there, so that might not really be required. Like they.
Then it would be Sue's Thai. Right, so we would need a letter. From Katsonides, saying he agrees.
I think he's gotta plot it first to figure out who.
He has to what?
He has to plot it first to see who, what owners are affected.
What, but you're saying, put the sidewalk in front of Sue's Thai Cuisine. That's the owner.
Yeah, he's just saying, you know, depending on how far it extends, it will dictate how many properties to get affected.
Right.
Well, I think I'm making a list of who's affected. It's Sue's Thai, that would be, that would be the one that we would need to get. In order to make this new plan work. Okay, so then I will make a motion to. Adopt resolution zero seven twenty twenty four dash five. Okay, so then I will make a motion to adopt resolution zero seven twenty twenty four dash five uh for an amount not greater than seven hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And with a township matched to this grant for ten percent.
Sure.
Any comments or questions? On favor or.
I would, I would say, Ben, when you're up between um Dollar General and Perkins, if I remember correctly, um I don't think through the sidewalk, it's gonna go, it has to go through the porch of the one house.
Yeah, it's gonna have, it's gonna have to come out, right?
It's the that's not one house, it's too close to two oh nine.
Right.
We we plotted it once when we were doing Dollar General, right, right through the porch.
Right, and Dollar General, it then ended there.
Yeah.
Sidewalk there. It must be really nice to him, maybe he can't go through his own.
Okay, so that.
Walk through windows.
Okay, alright, and that brings us to letter F. Possible purchase of adjacent lot to the Wooddale garage. And project, any, any update?
Well, uh like we discussed at prior workshop meetings, we did have an appraisal done of that property that's adjacent to our Wooddale garage. Uh we got the appraisal back, uh it came back, I believe, at seventy three thousand dollars. Um we met with the owner of that property, uh which is L T S. Uh we did not disclose at that time um what the appraisal was, however, um the owner said he'd be willing to sell it to us because it's the least desirable lot. And we explained that, you know, what we would be looking for is to um at parking, uh recreation areas, walking trails, um and and also have locations for uh bunkers for mulch and compost, et cetera, for people up in Wooddale, it'd be sort of a a satellite of our oak grove facility for people up in Wooddale, um that they could drop off and or take. Uh we currently don't have enough room on the property we own to do that. Um and then also, uh the hope was that we could make it a polling location because I think everyone knows that throughout the entire township, regardless of where you live, uh the four polling locations, you can probably look out the front window and see all four of them from here. Um however, as recently as yesterday, I spoke to Commissioner Christie, uh who said he didn't believe it would work as a polling location because of the number of population up there. I I don't know if I necessarily agree with that, I think that was sort of off the cuff, um which doesn't make sense because you have all of Wooddale, you have Tapabuba, all those people have to come down here to musical drive or or to the school. I mean, it it's a twenty or twenty five minute drive, which people generally don't do. Uh I mean, we just tried to make it more convenient for people up in Wooddale, but again, commissioners don't feel it's any, it would work, at least that's what John Christie said, I I did not spoken to the entire election board, but that was John Christie's comment, so. So that's where we are right now, um the addition that we would put on the building, like I said, uh would be uh open areas thirty by forty, probably be less than seventy five thousand dollars. Uh it would have bathrooms, um so for when we're working up there, public works, work up there, or anybody for that matter, um whether it be uh seasonal work or we're up there plowing, there would be indoor bathrooms instead of, right now, the only thing we have up there is a a porta potty, uh which is, I mean, not the most desirable in in the wintertime, that's for sure. Uh we do have uh gas up there. We have materials up there for uh putting down material during storms, but again, we don't have any inside space uh for our workers, so that was the thought. So really, that that's the.
The inside space, no?
Right, but no facilities indoors.
Well, there's always a price township, that's right next door, that price township building.
Because it's open, they're not, there's only three, no, there's only three, they're not always out where.
So that seventy five thousand dollars for the thirty by forty edition, does that also include drilling the well and building septic?
I mean, we estimated it'd be about thirty five or thirty seven thousand dollars, I'm, this is not set in stone, I'm I'm going from memory here, about thirty seven for the building, um and about twenty for water and another ten or so crawl for septic. So that's why I say about about seventy five thousand, more or less could be hundred, could be fifty.
And then the parcel that we do have, the back, what is preventing us from using the back of the parcel that we have? That we're on now.
We made it back.
The north part of the parcel that we have, how many acres is the parcel that we have?
I don't know.
But the parcel we have, there's like a spring all the way towards the back, but then there's uh an area of land.
It drops off in the back. Towards Lake uh Lace Lane, is it, or Lace Drive? It drops off pretty heavy, right past, I mean, that's why the cinder bin is where it is, because it's a significant drop port. The adjacent property, we wouldn't raise the elevation per se, I mean, just put a ramp and or steps in so people parking there could get up to the building.
So it would be, you're you're thinking that a thirty by forty addition with water and septic will cost seventy five thousand and then the purchase of the property would be seventy five thousand? So it'll be another a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Right, and the idea is we'd go for grants, I mean, we would go, we'd go for a D E P grant for the bunkers and for the the, you know, the recycling efforts that would be put up there, that would be part of a D E P grant. There's L S A grants that we can go for, uh for the building, there's recreational grants can go for, I mean, the the swings and stuff, we would just take that from the garden, we know who uses that there. I mean, I Dan, you ever use this one? I don't think Danny's ever been on that.
Realize that the public is using, I mean, years of this country grants, I think there's, I take away from.
Well, it's fine, I I honestly, I just don't think it's ever been used.
Don't take it away from them, okay?
I I'm just saying if it's not used, that's all I'm saying.
It's used almost as often as a forty five, and you know that could be used on it.
Oh, I know, we we changed it all. If you use it on a picture. This way, not the fourth.
Yeah, and you've done a beautiful shade garden up there too.
Okay, I mean, the reason I put it in was, you know, you have kids up there playing, whatever, the parents are sitting there.
Right, oh yeah. But there's nothing, there's nothing else up in Wooddale, I mean, that's a recreation area.
Would you have deserves to add recreation?
Right.
Definitely a five acre grant.
Sure.
I mean, that's why we did the community gardens, was to provide facilities to an area that was underserved, because there's nothing off of. You know, for it.
Great. Yeah.
Maybe you could have another community garden up there, another dog park.
I don't think Danny wants another garden.
Alright, well, thanks for the explanation.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have any more?
Um, I mean, since we're on the subject, I mean, I know um L T S would would like some sort of indication from the township because they're not gonna market that to residents, if if that's the township's intent, so. Um i- if we're willing to proceed in that fashion, um yeah, I guess I can make that a motion that at least we can get into those discussions. Um I would like to try to coordinate so that the purchase is part of the grant if possible, I don't know. Um but if it is, that we can time it, as long as, as long as, I would think, as long as L T S had a commitment from the township that, yes, we're gonna buy it, um they would stop marketing it to potential residents. Because they have the four other lots.
I would like to see something a little more fleshed out before we.
With what?
Go ahead and say, let's make a motion to spend seventy five thousand dollars on a parcel.
Well, I mean, regardless of we.
Look, we just made Ben go through this whole thing over a couple of sidewalks.
Agreed.
And and diagrams and all of that, so I I think I'd like to see something a little bit.
Well, we know that, we know, we know we're gonna um put bunkers up there, we know we're gonna do uh the recycling efforts up there, we know we're gonna do the recreation area up there. Um I mean, I know you've had some concern, I guess is the best way to describe with the building. Um but, I mean, we we, I think it makes perf- perfect sense to have those facilities up there for people up in Wooddale.
To have, uh so your motion is to spend seventy five thousand dollars on a five acre parcel or?
Well, whatever that number is, I mean, the appraisal's seventy three, so the maximum, I guess, would be seventy three. Um if L T S wants less, then so be it.
But the purpose would be for another place, and then.
For expansion purposes.
And then, okay, for, well, no, I think we would wanna say what it's for. So it's for mo- it's to have.
Multiple use, multiple use.
And a saddle, to basically to create uh more parking for public works and a satellite for oak grove, to have leaves and all of that.
No, it'd be to do the addition on the building so there was inside facilities. Uh again, I mean, it could use, it could be rental space, I mean, would the people use?
Well.
You know, I mean, the the we're losing C C P, I mean, so if you had a a place for a a birthday party or something, or?
No, because as it is now, uh you need somebody, the reason why the community center works is because the library's in it. So the librarians are there to open and close.
Right.
So if you have a garage up there uh in Wooddale, somebody's gotta drive up and open it, be there while the event is happening and then lock up.
Right.
That's how we operate things now, that's how we operate this building, that's how we operate.
Yeah, but it, there's nothing up there to 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 steal, or there's no company secrets up there, I mean, you lock the the door to the garage and to the trucks, you're only using a.
Birthday party in a garage?
No, I'm saying in this, in the the addition. Whatever, I mean, they they just give them the key, you rent it for a Saturday afternoon, you give us the key back, you don't screw anything up, you get your deposit back, period.
No, we we talked about this a while ago when we first took office here because there were committee members who thought we should just make them keys to this building so that they could come in, the committee member could come in, use the building. So I'm I'm not in favor of that, especially.
No files up there or any.
But you're saying public works is going to keep their trucks and all of that stuff.
In the locked garage, correct.
Right, so I I'm I'm against providing keys for the public to use.
Rental, I I I wouldn't have any concern, we can, we can certainly.
The fire department didn't run the rental of their hall that way.
Okay.
We didn't run Whispering Times that way, we don't run this community center that way, we didn't run this building this way, so I'm.
No, I'm not comfortable, honestly. Hmm, I don't know, I mean, like you say, Mark, if we had H O As, I mean, we're talking about responsible adults, I mean, then, you know, just opening the door and said, have at it.
Well, I think Smithfield just posted rules for uh responsible adults using their parks responsibly, so uh you know, I don't think uh that's a wise idea.
But we're not gonna have the pool.
It doesn't matter, I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't just open, look, if we thought that that was a good idea, we would have bought bought the parcel across from Judy Pootek. And I remember the argument from both you and Mark about having an open pavilion there because if we had raised that house in Judy Pootek Park, we would have had the electric and water and the proposal was to have an open pavilion so that people could use it. And I remember you saying, Mark, we, you know, once you have bathrooms available to the public and parks, now you've gotta have somebody to clean them, and you didn't feel it was a good idea.
I still don't, because we have bathrooms available in the community centers that have never been used by the public, my knowledge.
But if you're talking about the outside one, it it has, and I, we just had that discussion, Chris. But there's somebody there in the building twenty.
When when was the answer, I thought it was all that time.
It's it's unlocked when there are events, for example, girls on the run when they have their camp four hours a day, that. So. But we're back, we're talking about, we're talking about your, this building now, so. If you thought it was a bad idea to have an open pavilion in Judy Pootek Park.
No.
Because you didn't want bathrooms or anything there, then saying that we're going to build a building in this remote area in Wooddale and just hand people keys to it to use it.
I mean, the logistics can be worked out, I mean, regardless, I mean, Chad lives, what? Mile away, I don't know.
Look, we tried to work out the logistics of having.
The more you think about it, the more ideas you come up with, what's going on up there, you can have a kickoff to the roadside bring up up there.
Right.
People, instead of driving all the way down here, get their bag open, Chris, and going back to Wooddale, spinning the roads. You give your hand and call him down on the top.
You can freeze that go up there.
Well, but the thing is, it it needs to be manned. You know, and you need a person there, and the reason why the community center works, the reason why this building works is because there's somebody here to do it, I'm sorry, you had your hand up, John.
I'm just saying, you'll think of something maybe sort of simplified thinking, I mean, you're in an Airbnb. The owner doesn't go in, open it, they give the keys to a person, they open it, close it, somebody cleans it, and you're all set.
Right.
Hmm.
That's, I mean, this sounds like the world.
So you're thinking we should have an Airbnb?
As an idea, we give a a a person, that's our home to somebody, they don't go there, open it for them, get them in.
But they had their credit card and money. But the deposit would have to be so much to do it, I mean, Chris takes deposits for the pavilion for for fifty dollars, what what would you?
What's the deposit for the community center?
Nothing, because there's somebody there for it. You know, the only time that, the only time people are choo- are charged for using the community center is when staff has to go there and open and close it after hours.
There's a deposit out there.
Yes, there is, it's a few hundred dollars if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, but somebody's there, Todd is there, somebody's there during the event. That's what the, we rent it for eight hundred dollars, that's what we rent C C P for, I don't think you're talking about renting this.
No.
Thirty by forty building.
No, I honestly, I I would, I wouldn't.
Well, I'm against handing the keys to a township.
Well, I mean, again, you know, we we can sit here, I mean, eight thirty night on a Thursday night to try to figure out the logistics.
So then I make a motion to table any motion for it. I mean, we don't, we don't have any of the details back.
We do.
We don't have anything, the motion would be, the motion comes when we accept a sale from L T S and they drew, they've drawn up.
And I said that I would, I would make the motion to proceed with our attorney um to further the discussion with L T S with the intent.
You don't need a motion to further, to have a discussion.
Intent of purchasing property for no more than the seventy three thousand dollars, that's in the appraisal. I mean, that's second class township code, we're not gonna pay more than the appraisal.
Right, and and I I, for my part, I would like to have more detail of how this is gonna work.
But the keys?
No, not the keys, like what, I'm curious to know as to why we can't have mulch and all of that on the property we already own that's so. Why not? It's a couple of.
The way it drops off, we we don't have the facility.
You can't drive.
No. No. I mean, Jared can explain that too.
Small.
Hmm.
So.
What part of the budget is this seventy five thousand coming out of, because well, we did the budget.
We take it out of the A R P money if we have to, you still have those, right?
We earm- we earmarked the area A R P money. We earm, we earmarked the A R P money for sidewalks and sewer and all those other.
We said, we said, these were some ideas that we had.
Right.
We didn't say it was set in stone. You, you checked with Bonnie yesterday and she said the same thing.
We created the categories. Whether money has to. Whether the money has to shift in between categories, for example, Mark's Tracer costs more than we initially earmarked for it.
Correct.
So whether we had to switch dollars from within those. We could do that. Well, then, why have a budget, why not just say?
A R P money, we said, what do we think right now, sitting here, where are we going to spend these funds? We knew we had green light dough, we knew we had Tracer, we knew we were going to pay off the truck. There was, there was, we knew we had to pay for axle rod, there was a couple of things that we knew off the bat. Then we said, okay, let, let's see if we can put money aside for this revitalized program, so we put, we said, okay. There was three hundred and seventy five thousand in there, and then we agreed this year, let's start with seventy five thousand dollars. For twenty twenty four and see how the program goes, and then we'll decide next year. How much we're going to budget for it, am I right?
We have already advertised that there is three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars.
What we discussed in the budget meetings. Is that we put seventy five thousand dollars and see how it goes this year. Very simple.
Yes, and then for the next, but the intent was that this three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars would be for the Main Street Grant Program. In successive years, well, then, you should have said something, we, we agreed, no, you didn't. We agreed to this amount for this grant, we are not reducing this grant. Everything that.
That's not what we discussed, that's not what we put in the.
It is absolutely, look, we put aside a certain amount in the budget to be done this year.
Correct.
But that doesn't mean that we're not going to use the rest of it. For succeeding years, that was the. The intent was to set aside the A R P money for this. The board approved, the press releases that went out, that the township was invested. The township was investing three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars into our store runs for it. So if money needs to shift within this piece here, for example, the. Payroll and time and attendance may be more, we may ship some dollars from sidewalk grant or sewer extension to that. Or the radios. The radios were. Were a hundred and eleven thousand. So you're saying your money to purchase your five acres could come from this pot right here.
Correct.
From something out of this pot.
Correct. Absolutely.
But we didn't discuss this in budget. We didn't budget this, we didn't even.
What if, what if the boiler blows up? And we need two hundred thousand dollars? Are we going to say, well, no, we said we're going to put money towards sidewalks, we're not going to get a new boiler.
That's maintenance.
Well, whatever, okay, whatever.
All right, it's late, motion to adjourn.
No, no, there's a motion on the table.
There's two motions on the table. What are they, Michelle?
And then made the motion to table action as there's no details, Mike made a motion to proceed with our attorney with the intent on the purchase of seventy three thousand. Based on the appraisal.
So one of them, so one of them needs to say.
Well, I don't think, I don't think Mike needs the motion.
That's exactly what you said.
Because I don't want to have.
To continue a discussion.
I don't want to have. No, this is put on here to, for public, anyway. The idea is that we don't have the attorney proceed. Not knowing that at the end of the day, we're going to purchase it for no more than seventy three thousand.
No, we have to know that from L T S first.
Right, but we can't spend more than what, what it's been a phrase.
So you seconded this motion or?
There's no motion.
There is a motion. I'm making a motion that we purchased the property for no more than seventy three thousand dollars.
Well, we don't know.
For no more than seventy three, which is what the appraisal came back at.
So can I say it dies for lack of a second? Dies for lack of a second.
So you're not going to second it?
There's no need to. We have to find out if L T S wants to even deal with that.
They do, I just told you that. I just told you, I met with L T S. And he said that if the township wants to buy it, he won't market it to other individuals. But he's not going to take it off the market for others, if we're just going to fool around for six months and say, you know what?
It doesn't, it won't take, look, if Ben can do a sidewalk plan in a couple of days, I'm sure that you can come up with something concrete for this.
But.
Session tomorrow.
But L T S doesn't want to, will not market it to others if we agree to purchase it, and that's why I'm saying to you. That we agree to purchase it for no more than the seventy three thousand dollars. L T S didn't know the seventy three thousand dollar number existed until came out at this meeting, and now it's on YouTube. So we do the watch songs to see how much we must have paid for the product.
That's what I, I think they're willing to sell for the term of the die.
Well, then, then it dies, if we can't get it for seventy three thousand, then it dies, that's fair, I agree.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, we're having a discussion.
Well, but your motion just died for a lack of a second.
No, he didn't know what he was doing.
I still, I still don't think there's any reason for the motion, so I'm, I'm going to let it die.
Okay, then I'll ask another question, are you? Agreeable to buy the property for seventy three thousand dollars, forget about a motion.
I would agree with that, yeah.
Okay, fair enough. So there's no motion needed. Two people on the supervisors have agreed to buy the property for no more than seventy three thousand, we don't need a motion, motion to adjourn.
And all I'm saying is, is I would, I, for the record, I would like more detail on what the property is.
And I'd be happy to flush all that out as we proceed with purchase.
All right, motion to adjourn. Comments or questions on favors? Oh, wait a minute, we did, you know what, we didn't do public comment, we're unadjourned. And I'm so glad that you're here, because.
I hope it's not a topic of rock.
We did not, we did not catch your name last time that you were here.
Hey. I had a question last month on firearms and noise. Of these firearms being discharged and posing to residents. And I see it's pretty vague in this, but you do have in chapter one oh seven fireworks here. You, you go on with the statutory authority intent. Pretty, pretty described here of, of these detrimental physical, mental, social being township residents will. Government, different conditions, general volcanic safety, peacefulness, whatever, this is fireworks, I realize this is a, I'm talking firearm. Stroud Township, and I'm not trying to care, I don't, any township, anybody, some of them are pretty vague, they have a hundred and fifty yard minimum. Where a, where a firearm can dis, be discharged from an occupied building. It's not a lot of fun to set at your house on your deck and have somebody discharge your firearm seventy five yard away from you. I think, I think the township to protect all the residents from this. And you, and you, if you read one oh seven, your fireworks and just go through there and just say that this is a handgun rifle, whatever, going on maybe for hours. I think, I think the residents need some kind of guarantee that this, they're not going to get up in the morning and have to listen to this for a couple of hours when they're having, trying to have a cup of coffee in the back. I'm not saying that, that nobody should shoot, I, I wouldn't, I would never say that, but I think there should be a buffer zone of where they can shoot. I mean, some of these places in, in developments are pretty darn close, and for somebody to walk up, put a little backup up and start shooting, it's going to happen.
So, Mr. Bergman, after the last time you were here, I went through, I had wanted to send you an email and realized that we didn't capture your. Contact information, I believe we do have it, though, but, but just in case, if you could give it to Michelle. After this meeting, that would be great. I looked at some past notes that we, and past research that we had done in the past, along with previous solicitors for it. There's only so much that the township can regulate, I understand that you want to capture this through via the noise ordinance, and currently. Our noise ordinance states that it has to be a continuous noise, so. It has to be a continuous noise of a certain decibel amount, so for example, if somebody were to run a lawnmower. Far enough away from your property continuously, that would be allowed, because it wouldn't reach the decibel level, but if they put it under your window. Between the hours, I believe it's nine and eight, it's not, it would not be allowed. The question that we asked years ago is if that could be applied to firearms too, because we cannot. Say that the same safety zone that applies to hunting can also apply to shooting. And it, target shooting, and as of now, if you were to call the state police, they come, they check, they see if you have a backstop, and then they leave. I completely understand what you're saying, but that's something that we would need to investigate, because there's a handbook for it, Dunkelberger's is very knowledgeable.
Sir, you referenced the Stroud Township ordinance, and that's the one the Pennsylvania Supreme Court took up, are you aware of that?
I don't, no, I'm not.
Okay, so there was relatively recently a sixty four page decision written by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court.
Okay.
And, and I'd known you were going to be here asking this question, but I would have read it more closely, I.
Okay.
Recollection was that they kind of dodged exactly the question you were asking, but, but the ordinance was challenged pretty strenuously. To the point that it got to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court.
The Supreme Court didn't make enough.
Well, they, I, I think they found a way to evade answering the question that you really are trying to ask about noise, and they. Categorized it for as like a zoning question.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying, I went online and Stroud Township has this ordinance.
That's because it was the Pennsylvania Supreme Court and defended it all the way. As far as, you know. Sixty four pages before.
Okay, I just, the question I had is, it's very, it can be very annoying. You talk about fireworks, fireworks, nothing to, to shoot off your fireworks for half an hour at a time, you should have high powered rifle next to your house for an hour and a half, two hours. A difference, that's fine, I understand, I understand your position. And we can't go anywhere with it, we can't go anywhere with it.
If you see me afterwards, I'll tell you how to find the case if you're interested in some.
I would like to see what it is that we can do, because I, I totally understand what you're saying, because even. Even if somebody is target shooting in a dense area where you have propane tanks and all that, I mean, a stray bullet can go pretty far.
Well, okay, and they, they require you to have backstops and so on and so forth, and like you said, I don't begrudge anybody who wants to shoot you, God bless them, but not. Hundred feet from a house. Per hour. And I, I still think the township, these towns should be able to, to protect the, you want to call it sandy, quiet or whatever of the residents. Should be able to do something.
Agreed.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman. Any other public comment? I think we adjourned already, but.
Yeah, we adjourned.
Okay, second. All right, all in favor? Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, appreciate it. Thank you, Ben. I hope you feel better.